Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzik?
Here.
Mr. Levens?
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board, and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape McCounty Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start this afternoon's work session with administration and finance.
Okay, first up, we have a discussion on the fees for 2019 for recreation. Tina, could you come up?
Thank you. So, I have a list of, after discussion with our tennis pro, Anthony Carey, he has suggested that we increase some of the prices for our tennis program, just to be competitive with Great Bay, Ocean City, and the surrounding community as far as with tennis. I guess I could start with the, he does not want to change the membership. So, the adult membership is set at 150, and that's what it'll, he proposes continue, and 100 for the juniors. But for the tennis member guest passes, those stay the same. Tennis court rentals, last year they were $24, he's suggesting that it goes to 30 for 90 minutes, and it was 16 for 30 minutes, and he suggests that goes to 20. And that's for the court rentals, and then also pickleball court rentals. Last year, it was $2 per player for a two-hour of open play with a $75 unlimited open pass. It's been suggested that goes to $80 for an unlimited open pass, and $3 per player for open play. $3 is what Avalon charges right now, but they are at 75 for unlimited open play pass. And then the rentals, it is suggested last year was 12 dollars for 90 minutes. To bump that up to $15 for 90 minutes, and it was $8 for 60 minutes, which will go to $10 for 60 minutes.
And you said that Avalon is $3 for pickleball?
For pickleball.
Last year, were they 2?
They're no, last, last, I don't know when they're changing that, but when I looked to compare it, they were at 3.
They're 3.
We were at 2 last year, so it's just suggesting that we bump up to go to 3. And then the arts and crafts will stay the same. The tennis kids' club, last year was 250 for the, for a season, and $20 for a drop-in, and Anthony suggested that goes to 300 for the season, and 25 for a daily drop-in. And that is the same price that Ocean City and Great Bay charge.
What exactly is that, the tennis kids' club?
That's kind of like a tennis clinic that, it's daily, it shows up. They show up every morning. There's different dotted balls that the kids use that reduce the bounce and stuff like that. So, our tennis kids' club, for five to eight years old, they, it's every Monday and Wednesday from 8 to 9. So, that's twice a week. And then, there's another kids' club that meets on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but it's a different age group. So, it's broken up.
So, $300, your child can go to the clinic twice a week all summer?
Yep.
And what, for an hour, right? Correct, you said 8 to 9?
8 to 9, yep.
Okay.
And then, it's the same exact thing for, so for the tennis junior development, last year it was 420, and he is suggesting that goes to 500. And the, the junior development is an hour and a half long. So, it's 11 to 12:30, and that's twice as week as well. And then, it, to, it was $30 for a daily drop-in last year, and he's suggesting that that goes to 35. And again, I've, you know, we did research and that's all kind of competitive to the surrounding prices. And then, just the youth basketball league, last year it was $50. This year, we're suggesting it goes to 55. And the morning basketball clinics are free to league participants. So, if you sign up for the basketball league, you also get to go to the clinics for free. And then the youth clinics, it's $75 per clinic, which ultimately breaks down to $5.70 a day. So, they're suggesting that that goes from 75 to $80. And then, we've been in discussion with instilling a after-deadline fee to $85, because people are signing up the day of, and then, we've had excess of T-shirts. It's just for more equipment order and make sure that we have appropriate staffing. That's it.
And the junior development, is that similar to the kids' club, twice a week, or what is that?
It is, it's twice a week, but it's for an hour and a half. So, it's 11 to 12:30. I have a printout of the breakdown, if you needed that.
I have a question.
Sure.
In the past, the Recreation Advisory Board, or Recreation Advisory Committee, would weigh in on the changes that were going to be suggested. Did you get to the opportunity to discuss?
I did it. I think it was just due to the timing of me being hired, and with everything being set, and as far as getting marketing materials and publications together, Anthony just suggested that, you know, we're way under par as far as with our tennis, and especially with the building of the new building, we're really giving a lot more than a lot of other towns are. So, I think that this is kind of just per instance thing that he brought to my attention, that we did not review the proposed fees for recreation for 2019.
But the committee is active?
Yes, we've met once so far, and then we do plan on meeting again.
I think there's a good case to be made that we could actually charge more than those other locations, so I think...
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that.
More than reasonable and long overdue, really, should have been addressed a while ago.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you break down the math, we're, as far as, that our camps do run for seven weeks. And like I said, if you break down the clinics, we charge $10 for arts and crafts, and our clinics amount to $5.70 per clinic, if you break it down per week.
I have another question, if I may?
Sure.
I know it's difficult to predict it, but what would you expect would be any expectation as far as change in participation based on increasing the rates?
I think that with looking at the programs that we offer, I think that we're actually going to increase participation. We're offering flag football now, because I know that the league, that we had a flag football league in the past, but that time conflict with our basketball league. Our basketball league is kind of a loyal league. I mean, that people playing it from, you know, everyone's bragging about it. Just as being a local, I know that all, all the guys that I'm still friends with brag about, you know, how they were raised in a league, and actually, a lot of our camp counselors played in the league, and then they turned into working for us as staff. So, I mean, I don't, I don't think that the price increase is going to impact our participation by any.
No, I, I think the demand is pretty insensitive to price here. I think it's pretty clear that when the people come here, they're willing to pay, as long as it's not an absurd fee, a reasonable, and I think the rates are extraordinarily reasonable, given the, the nature of this community and what we're offering, so...
Yeah, we do.
I think you'll find that the demand is, is not sensitive at all to the prices that...
Right.
You're proposing.
And not to compare towns or anything, but we offer probably at least over 10 more programs than Avalon does, as far as between camps and our summer-long programs, like the Sandbar, the boot camp, and stuff like that.
Okay, good. Good, thank you.
On those tennis clubs, do they sell out?
As far as, I think most of us, the camps do.
Yeah, they're, what he usually does is if, you have to register for that. So, if he has a registration at, you know, his 35, he will staff another person that can be able to accommodate, because we have the facilities to accommodate.
Okay, based on how many people he gets, he brings?
Correct, right.
Because the only one that jumps out to me that is a, is a huge leap is the 420 to 500.
Yeah, that's, I don't know if we were behind the ball in the past, and we're trying to play catch-up now, which I think might be the case. But I also think with the addition of our tennis support building, that our facilities are going to be top-notch. So, the prices should reflect kind of what kind of experience they're getting.
Okay. Anybody else? What are we putting this on for next meeting? The resolution, or did we put it on for today?
It's on for today.
It's on for today.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of phone calls for when programming's going out, so...
Okay.
The sooner the better. That's it?
That's it.
All right.
Yep. Once we approve it tonight, then she can launch our new rec website that has all the information on it too, so...
Yeah, our new website, I've gotten sneak peeks at it, and it's, it really looks great.
Oh, good.
You know, as far as just visuals and user-friendly, and more options, as far as, you know, we even have a tab for the bocce league, so, you know, people can see the standings and stuff like that. So, hopefully, that'll obviously also increase interest with everything, too.
Excellent.
Okay, next would be the engineer's report.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start with some good news. The borough was notified by the NJDOT that a $200,000 grant was allocated for the reconstruction of 88th Street from Second to Third Avenue, so that's very good news. Next, both the 95th Street Bathroom renovation project and the 82nd Street Tennis Court building project is completed. We are currently working on administrative closeout. Lastly, the contractor for the 2018 Utility and Road Program continues to make very good progress. Here's a street-by-street update, and I'll try to condense this, because this is a lot. Here we go. 122nd Street and 118th Street all were completed with the exception of final paving. 108th Street and 110th Street, all utility and concrete work completing, and they've started the roadwork. 106th Street, concrete work is completed, and they've started the roadwork. 102nd Street, all utility and concrete work is completed, and they're starting roadwork. 88th Street, 92nd Street, 100th Street, and 101st Street, all utility work is completed, and they're working on concrete and roadway items. Lastly, Chelsea Place, the concrete work is completed, and they are starting on the roadway work. So, bearing any unforeseen problems, this project should be completed on time before the season. So, they've had multiple crews in town, they've made very, very good progress, and we're happy with the work so far.
Do you anticipate everything wrapping up mid-May, or just prior to Memorial Day? If you had to...
I'm going to take, I'm going to take the longest time you give me, I'll say that mid-May. But it shouldn't be an issue.
All good news.
Yeah, it was a good one.
Just out of curiosity, Margaret, so we have a grant for 88th Street, right?
Yes, and I believe...
I'm just, I'm just, just curiosity. How, how did it become 88th Street? Why not 86th? How did, how did the grant land on 88th Street?
So, the normal protocol, so normal protocol would be is the borough would get a letter from the DOT, and this is an annual roadway grant. You would get it, administrator would get it, I would see it, and then we would start to ping off each other, collaborate. Hey, the grants due, what do you want to submit? There's a collaboration at the borough, I get my marching orders through a resolution by council that authorizes me to submit the street, and then we put it in. So, I would assume that it's on a public works rating system, priority...
Okay, now, I just, so it comes from the borough, the borough picks the street, basically?
Correct.
Right, with your help, of course.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Good.
Nothing more for the engineer? Tax collector?
Hello, everyone. I'll start with utilities. We're doing our meter readings as we speak, we've collected them, and this is the read where we'll discover all the undetected leaks from the winter, because it's a January, February, and March reading. We're working on our shut-offs, which are for prior-year balances. That'll take place in June, and by doing this, we eliminate these parcels from being attached to the tax sale list in September. So, it's, it's a cleanup thing. On the tax side, our homestead file was downloaded this week. The bills went out yesterday, so anybody receiving a homestead shall, will get a bill this week. A reduced bill, an adjusted bill. And as far as Payargos goes, my update on, in Payargo, I couldn't be happier. We completed the scrub files, we formatted the text files. The utilities was pretty easy, because they're five-digit account numbers, it's one format, and we went live March 20th with utilities. Taxes, it was a little more complex, because of the blocks, the sub-blocks, the lots, the sub-lots, and then some qualifiers. So, we're still working on that text file, and we, we're going to go live on Monday. And the company is very professional, and they're a real pleasure to work with, so just want to put that out there. Real happy with Payargo, and I thank you for that. Thank you.
Tax assessor?
Good afternoon. I don't have much to report this month. April 1st was the deadline to file appeals for taxes, so we have 10 at the county, and we have 14 at the tax court. And most of those are filed with an attorney by these mass mailings that they're looking for, well, they're like fishing. So, I'm going to say probably 10 out of 14 are two attorneys that just do a mass mailing. Also, on a nice note, I inspected the salt spa today at the REEDs for the co-inspection, and it is impressive. Very, very, very nice. I think you all will be very proud of what they've built there. So, that's all I have. Any questions? Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you, Margaret.
Construction and zoning?
Good afternoon. Last month, I had reported that property transfers for January and February were way down, but March rebounded well, and we had actually three more than the previous year in March. So, transfers are looking back to normal. Atlantic Electric is proposing to replace the pole that feeds this building next Monday. So, the power will be down, but we have a generator that runs the old section. Actually, police station had, does too, but they're replacing the poles across the street on 95th Street. That's due to happen Monday. Construction's zoning office is back in full swing, it's, you know, getting gearing up for another season here, so getting really busy down in those offices. The grading plans now, that we had adopted the ordinance for grading plans, they're rolling in now. The contractors and the design professionals are all accustomed to them now, and they've had conversations with our engineer, and they know what we're looking for now, so they're coming in regular. And lastly, a few, the bulkheads are starting to come in for the new bulkhead ordinance. We have a couple that, they'll learn, you know, it's, it's the same as when the grading plan first started. The engineers and the contractors are a little surprised at first, but once we get them lined up with our engineer, they'll know what we're looking for, and I would anticipate in a few months that that'll be rolling along smoothly as well.
Good.
We had one new permit issued for a single-family home last month, three demolitions, only four dumpsters. It was kind of a slow month with us in, in the office for permits, but we anticipate it's going to start picking up right about now, you know? The REEDs is, we just did, actually, we're doing all our final inspections on Friday, all our walkthroughs, to come up with what we need to, for a final CO for the whole thing. I think, I just handed Mark the CO for the, the bathroom renovation next door. I don't think we gave you, did we give you the information for, or the CO for the, the tennis court yet? We finalized that, I think, we thought it should be all done, but, but that's finished. Other than that, it's been pretty good in town. It hasn't been just our normal job site complaints, which have been handled on a daily basis, so we're, we're looking good.
Good.
We'll start ramping up, we're gearing up for it. Do you anticipate any delays with the final of the salt spa? Or do you, you, from what you see, you expect it to be normal? Everything was inspected, everything was inspected for the, for the residential part of it, and if they didn't have all the safety issues, and, you know, fire, the sprinkler system, the alarm system, if that wasn't all finished, then that would have been the only issue. But that was already inspected, and everything should be up and running. Okay. Yeah. The other spaces that they have, anything, they wanted to try to get, do it piecemeal, and, and get temporary COs for everything along the way, but I said, no, let's just try to do it all one shot in the end, just so we weren't jumping around to, to get the whole thing finalized. They should, they should be ready for, hopefully, Friday. By maybe middle of next week, they, they should have a CO and complete. Be open. Yeah.
Anybody have anything?
Yeah, this is, it's off-topic, yet it isn't. You mentioned demolition. Some, somebody approached me six weeks ago or so, and for the life of me, I can't remember who it was. But, you know, we, we do all these demolitions in town, I don't know how many we do a year, but it seems we do a lot of them. And, and, and their, their comment was, you know, we never remember what was there. And that's true, because I know that I don't either. Is it feasible that when somebody comes in and asks for a demolition permit, that we require a photograph of what they're tearing down? Just so that we have some record going forward of what used to be there? I think there's people interested in that kind of stuff, and I, you know, I'm just throwing it out there, because it's true, you're right, like, I'll ride by a house that was demolished, and a week later, I ride by my bicycle, I can't remember what was there.
We could ask for, we could do it, we could do it ourselves, if we, if we have it in the back of our minds to do it prior to the demolition.
And just stick it in the file. I mean, is that a crazy request, or is that something that we...
You could get on Google Maps right now, and see what was there.
Google Maps has...
Google Maps doesn't update that.
But follow through with what he's saying, do we get pictures of the house that is finished? When it's done, that goes with that property?
Just a survey, just a survey. Well, there's pictures on the elevation certificate.
I mean, a picture of the house finished, just as important, the big, the replacement.
Now, we don't ask for that, no. It's not an ordinance, it's not a building code that requires that, no.
Because, yeah, because sometimes things change after they go up and they get the CO. Just worth having that picture, too, before and after.
You'd probably have to take multiple pictures all the way around the house just to see.
We do that with the blueprints. We'll ask for as-built, if it's changed from the plans that we're inspecting, we will ask for as-built blueprints. That's not a, you know, a picture, but it gives us what the actual is in the house.
I would think that that would be something that would be, be very valuable to the museum, because I do know that people who live in a house now often go to the museum, and they say, can you tell me what was here before, and before that, and before that? And I know Margaret will be, be able to attest to the fact, and she's here today, that people do that, and they have records of some of them, but I'm not sure that they have complete records. So, maybe that's something that can be done in conjunction with the museum, just for that very reason, for people's own archival history.
In our, in our defense, it adds another thing on the list of things that we have to require before we issue a CO, or, which, which it's, it's a pretty long list.
Well, maybe, it might be something as, it might be something as simple, Mike, is just when you get a demolition permit, call, call the museum and say, hey, this...
Yeah, just notify the museum and...
Let them go, let them go, if you're so inclined.
If they want to do it.
And then they can archive it as well.
I'm going, unfortunately, Margaret stepped out, but... Margaret's right, oh, wrong Margaret. No, yeah. I'm going to verify part of her assessment, she should be taking photos for her file, so she may have them. I just want to verify that. If not, I think that's a simple place, because I know when she goes into the home, she'll take them. She should also be taking the outside.
Well, I guess how could we trigger that, to where they, you know, they're notified, and they can do all the legwork themselves, as long as they know, you know, with the demolition permit and the new home permit, they could go anytime they want.
I would say part of the demo permit. If you're going to come in for a demo permit, you got to give us a portrait, a picture of it.
We could put it on our list of things, but if we don't have it in ordinance form to require it, then it's going to be tough for us to enforce it.
Right, or like you said, if the museum's made aware of it, and they do it, and they keep an archive. It does seem like something that they would be interested in doing.
If they already do it, it's just incomplete. So, if they had the heads up, they could make an effort to keep it complete as of now. And how hard is it now to add that to our application for us also, and it's a, your phone takes a picture? It's not hard to do? And it wouldn't be you doing it, it would be them doing it.
Right, right, more professional, but although I'm pretty good with my iPhone.
Yeah. That's what they'll all be taking with.
Take it with your, with your phone.
Yeah, yeah.
Not hard.
Here she comes now, we can ask her.
Well, when you do. Margaret, when you do your assessments for like the new, new homes, do you take photos of the inside and the outside? For your documentation?
Vital has, it's, Vital has taken some of the...
The existing homes, so, so we have them, but if, if one is torn down, and they do a new one, and you go out to, to come up with the assessment, do you take photos?
Um, I, I should get back into the house, because I didn't last year.
Okay. So, moving forward, Margaret will do that.
So, she'll take the new photo?
Correct.
Still leaves us with the old photo?
Well, we may, Vital had to take photos of every home when they did the revale, so we should have them in the file, correct?
So, we have that, and then anybody who's going to demolish something now, though, what would we ask?
Well, if we get the demolition permit, we can just pull that information out of our assessment file, what the photo is of the house, if you need that.
I could give you a query of all the, a list of the homes that were demoed over the last 30 years.
It seems to be...
I mean, if we have that information, we can just forward it to the museum, if that's what you're looking to do. That, Margaret's shaking her head yes. That works, Margaret will help Margaret.
The museum just get made aware of demolition permits, and then we know we're taking pictures of the new structure, and then let, let the museum archive the old.
Any questions for us?
Ray would be more than happy to go around and take pictures.
He's got a lot of time. He's got a lot of time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, CFO, Jim's, we have one for introduction, our capital bond ordinances. So, Jim's going to give you pretty much a highlight of all of that, because it's been a while since we went over all the capital.
All right. Yeah, in conjunction with the budget being introduced tonight, or adopted, rather, there's two bond ordinances on the agenda. One is for the general capital fund, and that amount is authorized in $5,395,980 million in improvements, and issuing $4,841,181 in debt. The, the bond ordinance also includes $300,000 in items that we are not issuing any debt for, and that is that, yeah, we're paying cash for, and that is debt management, or not debt management, dredge management, back bay dredge maintenance program, and the beach replenishment maintenance program. The other projects in the, in the listed in the capital ordinance are all funded with 5% down payment. And just to give you a highlight of some of the things that are in there, we have the, for the police department, we have the security cameras, and then the 700 megahertz radios. For the fire department, we have the fire engine, and also 700 megahertz radios. Public Works, we have curb improvements, a trash truck, ADA improvements for beach access, service vehicles, curb and sidewalk improvements, 114th Street Bay, Bay bulkhead boat for Public Works, a skiff, 111th Street outfall repairs, a, some trash recycling containers, a case loader and backhoe, paving, some parking lots, and then 2019 Jeep Wrangler. And the natural resource items were all 100% cash. And then for recreation, we have resurfacing of the recreational courts. The other ordinance is for the water sewer fund, and that totals $7,700, I'm sorry, $4,753,175,000. And, and that ordinance is not required any down payment, because the fund is self-liquidated. And even after, and even after the ordinance is adopted, the fund is still self-liquidated, which means that the revenues exceed the, the operating expense and the debt. And in that fund, we have infrastructure improvements in, in conjunction with road improvements. And we also have stormwater improvements, drinking water and sanitary system improvements. There's money in there for water meters and IRTs, or, yes, and a outfall replacement program, a utility truck, sewer lift station engineering at 114th Street, 80th Street well improvements, engineering, and engineering to relocate some generators, or a generator. And that summarizes both those capital projects. Any questions?
Next up, our clerk. The Borough Clerk's report for March, the fees taken in, $13,898.95. And in the construction office, fees taken in, $34,164. The applications for the kayaks were over on March 31st, and the lottery for picking 96 spaces will take place on April 11th.
How many do we get, you know, how many total?
I don't know. Do you know?
Say around one fifty, one sixty something.
That many.
And also, I have four boat slips available in the marina. If anybody knows, anybody's looking for a boat slip, just get in touch with me. Next, planning board.
Planning board. We are starting to close in on the actual updated master plan at this point. We last met on March 11th, and on March 11th, our planning board engineer, Paul Cates, outlined the timeline for completion for the master plan. So, since that time, so that was March 11th, the timeline is, there was gonna be a meeting with the department heads at the next management meeting, which took place on March 20th. There was an additional subcommittee meeting took place on the 27th. Throughout the month of April, Paul Cates is gonna be meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, Chippewa, the courts, the community of the courts, meaning Bauer, Weber, Stone, Linden Lane, not the courts as in Debbie Scott, the court property owners, and the clergy. So he's gonna use some time to meet with them and just have them weigh in on what they think, you know, what input they may have towards the community. We have a planning board meeting on the 8th, and at that time, last meeting, we were all given a copy of the draft, and we were all told the timeline, and the planning board itself, members are gonna weigh in on the draft on April 8th. There's another subcommittee meeting planned on the, on May 8th. Our first public hearing is tentatively scheduled for May 13th. We're also, we're going to reserve May 20th for a second public hearing, if needed, in May. June 10th would be the public hearing and adoption of the new master plan. Now, we also were holding, we held June 22nd in abeyance, should we need that for another meeting. And that's a Saturday, so I'm wondering if that is correct, if that should be the 24th. Does anybody know what the why would be the 22nd? Did we, this, why we would have a Saturday on there? That doesn't make sense to me.
I think we discuss the following Monday.
That's what I thought, which would be the 24th.
The 24th.
If we needed it.
Because nothing could transpire over the weekend in terms of us not having a master plan.
Okay, so that must be the 24th. We have a couple of extra meetings in there, should they be needed for the public hearing. And that's what we continue to do in the planning board. Any questions?
The only other thing I was gonna mention, I know it's probably gonna come up at the next meeting, we've been discussing it for, wow, I think, two years now, and I know the Chamber of Commerce has been anxious to get some iteration of what the planning board would like to do. I know Paul Cates has been working on draft guidance, was for outdoor dining in the restaurants in town. So I think council should see something within the next month as to planning board guidance on this issue.
Where's, in looking at this tentative schedule, Mayor, where does council have a chance to weigh in on any, any proposed amendments or changes prior to going right to adoption?
That was one of the questions, too, that I even had. At what point is it disseminated to the governing body?
I thought that was supposed to happen before it went pretty much anywhere else.
No, the opposite. No, it's the opposite, because there's no sense bringing it to the governing body when stakeholders have not even been, haven't even weighed in, and that's where you're apt to see most of your suggestions would become after that. So once everybody has been consulted, at that point would be when it's complete. And then the governing body look at it, and, because I'm not, and honestly, I'm not sure exactly, does the planning board adopt it, and then it comes to council, or is it the planning board's document, and council weighs in like any other stakeholder?
Andrew said it was the planning board document, that we would, as a planning board, adopt it, and then it comes to council as a courtesy. I'm not sure if council makes any legal.
I think so. Why don't you let me reach out to Andrew and discuss that?
Yeah, just double check that.
And get back to the council.
I think council adopts the master plan that planning board proposes, but it's with the advising. My understanding is it's with the advising consent. The planning board is your experts, including your council for the planning board. Propose it to council. If council sees anything glaring that they would like to change or have addressed, then they obviously have the opportunity to do so. But council, I agree with Mayor Judy, council is the last line of review before.
But saying, and when you say last line of review, it doesn't mean you don't read drafts. You know what I mean? Like, the plan is, to be honest with you, is to put it on the website, so the entire general public can see it as well, as these other groups are being met with one-on-one. So really, anyone can weigh in.
Including.
Every, including council. Everybody's a stakeholder.
So every meeting between now and adoption is your opportunity to weigh in on anything public, or council, or otherwise?
Well, it seems backwards to me. I think council members should know what we've been working on for two years, even if they don't make comments.
Well, that's the plan, like I said, is get the draft online.
I'm not saying send it to the public right away. I'm just saying.
I don't see any, I see no reason not to just put it on the website, and have the public, have every, I don't think anybody really has a right to see it first, so to speak. That it's just a matter of, this is just the timeline being, so there's meetings kinda being scheduled along the way, is really what it is. It's not a matter that anybody really has a right to see it first. Right now, the planning board just got, because the subcommittee's been meeting, so now the engineer's taking the subcommittee and had to write a draft. So now we have the draft for the very first time. And we literally got this draft at the very last meeting. I don't, this is the first that I've seen it. So then on April 8th is when we'll be talking about it as a group, is really what it means.
But is the draft in your hand, is that, is that, that's not the whole master plan?
Yes.
That's the whole master plan?
It's re-adopting with editing.
Yes, this is it.
It's really a re-adoption of the existing master plan, that edit.
Okay, so that, the old master plan's been updated, edited.
Correct.
Yes, this, yes, yes. And this is a, this is a draft, so as it was discussed at the last planning board meeting, we should just be putting this on the website, the draft, and anyone is privy to the draft.
So you'll have that April 8th at your meeting, next.
And then it can go on, it can go on the website, and then these other, the timelines is so, meetings are being set up with particular people, as opposed to just throwing it up on the website. Because if, and correct me if I'm wrong, by law, all we have to do is revise the master plan and have a public hearing. We don't even have to be reaching out to specific stakeholders and trying to draw people in. We're being proactive in drawing people in. And that's kinda what we're trying to do, is engage people by directly saying, weigh in, weigh in.
Right, right. And like you say, nobody should get it first, because you don't want to insult anybody.
Right.
Everybody, everybody counts. So, but we, I would like to know if, like Charles said, if it's presented to council for us to adopt, to me, that means you vote on it in its final format, after whatever changes have been.
After the whole review.
Those changes occur with ongoing input, and you are part of that process.
I understand. I understand.
So that when it ultimately evolves, it should incorporate the concerns of council, as well as the concerns of citizens, and the concerns of board members?
Ideally, if council, those who are not privy to the subcommittee, or, and sit on council, ideally, they show up at the planning board when the nuts and bolts of this are being discussed. So that when it's proposed to hear, your input has already been heard with the rest of the general public, and leaders within the community who have all put their input. So when it comes before us, there is no, oh, wait, what's this doing in here? Well, it's not in there, because it's already been vetted at the planning board level.
Because we have two representatives from council sitting on the subcommittee.
True.
Right? So, I mean, we're identifying, and that's, and there didn't have to be two people from council on that.
I understand.
You know what I mean? So we're, in identifying people to engage them, that's part of the engagement. And then this will go up after the 8th, after the planning board actually looks at the draft. It'll go up on the website, and the meetings will be just continuing from there.
One of the questions that was, that I brought up at the last meeting, was I have a little bit different thought process here. Our master plan is about this thick from 2009. It has got all kinds of information in it. It has the census in it, and if you haven't read it, don't worry, you should read it, because then you will have a better feel. There are things in there that we know the borough's not gonna ever do, and I thought that was going to be part of updating. I mean, there's old things in there, just things that I've highlighted my whole one, saying, we've never done this, I don't think we're going to do it. I thought that was going to be part of this process.
Did you give that to the planner?
Well, Paul said that's not what he was designed to do. That that was not part of what we were going to do with the master plan.
I'm not understanding how that would be.
Well, I have my master plan, and everybody should have one, and you should just go through and highlight all the old things from nine years ago, that really were probably from, you know, farther back than that, that should be removed. There's some things, we're not gonna have a library on the beach. That's in our master plan.
I was gonna say, that's not part of this revision, is to remove items like that?
I was told no. Right? You were there. I was told no. That was not part of this, this whole thing, which doesn't make any sense.
No, it doesn't make sense to me, though. That doesn't sound right.
Also in it is the, all the statistics, which are fascinating, about how many people live in town, the census, all of that. I thought we were going from the beginning to the end, and making it new. That apparently is not.
Right. That's my understanding as well, from beginning to end and make it new. That's what happens when you adopt a new master plan. Yes, I agree with you. That's my understanding of what's happening.
But that's not in here, because you don't see it in your draft. You don't see the updates of removing this, removing that, waterfront business district. There's a lot of old things in there.
I wonder if you don't see it, because they were removed.
Well, they're in the one that I have a copy of.
This draft?
No, no, the old, okay, not the old, it's not old, well, it is.
The existing master plan.
The one that we are replacing, which is dated 2009.
Right, so the existing master plan has a waterfront business district in it?
Yes, has library on the beach.
And library on the beach.
Whole bunch of stuff.
So what you're saying is you think that should still be in, or should be, should be removed?
I think.
Okay. And that's my understanding, as it is.
I thought we were going from the beginning to the end, and yes, we picked up a lot of good parts, and added a bunch of things, and put a big wish list up in the sky. I just thought that this, that the process was to come up with a new master plan for 2019 that was.
I think it's an edit out of the old one, so yes.
Yeah, that's, I agree with you. That's my understanding, too.
These are the pertinent updates to it that you have before you, the proposed. It's an edit of, my understanding is an edit of the existing current master plan. There's a lot in there that is pertinent and relevant and remains. There's items that you're talking about that should be removed. But these are the major points in terms of changes to that master plan. But the major nuts and bolts of it is remaining and staying.
Oh, yeah.
And we can verify that when we talked into that.
We're not rewriting from scratch a new master plan.
Because my understanding is what Josie's understanding is, that that is what's happening.
But I think Mr. Cates said, I'm not rewriting a whole new master plan. We're editing the existing one, because by and large, the framework exists and is relevant. It's tweaking it to make.
What's your understanding of what is happening right now in the subcommittee?
Apparently not what's happening.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'm not at the meeting, so I don't know what's happening at it.
Well, don't feel left out.
Somebody, some, okay, since we have this confusion, somebody ought to talk to Paul and find out.
Right.
You know, because if it has, if the 2009 master plan has that census date in it, that's not the census date that we want in the 2010.
Right, we wouldn't want that.
So everything's gotta be right.
Right.
We gotta see where Paul is.
I guess I'm not understanding. Right, all right.
Well, don't feel left out.
Okay.
I'm not, it's not a, it's not a big thing, but it is a big thing, because I thought we were gonna do a whole new one that was gonna be about this thick.
Well, talk on Monday, at the planning board meeting. I know that when you start thinking, you know, with a census can probably quite easily be added, and as far as I know, that all could be, you're saying that he said it's not being added?
Correct.
We shall discuss that with him.
It even has how many voters there are in town. It's really detailed. The one that we have was a great thing to follow. And I don't think it will be that hard to do, but that's not what we.
So as a group, if that's what's something that we, input that we're giving, we can have it. Right? Okay. All right. I think we need to talk to him, because I'm pretty, I'm kind of on the same line as you are. I thought it was gonna be that same document, but edited. So.
I think it is the same document, edited and updated with these.
Okay, we'll see. All right. Okay, all right. I shall let you know what Paul says.
Bringing forward.
Monday.
Please do.
What Paul says on Monday. Anything else?
That was fun.
Okay. Is that if right enough? I believe it is. Who's next? Public Works.
Public Works slash utility.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I gave you guys an updated version of our Public Works report, because there was an error. I don't know if anybody's reviewed it, to see where the error was. But it was in the water statistics from 2018. So we had to modify those numbers to make sure that they were right. Don't wanna submit a falsified report, so. Okay. Everybody read the reports?
Always.
Uh-huh.
They're so excited.
All right, just some of the things that are going on around town with our crews. Buildings Department is working on the beach sack and the concession stands right now to get them ready for the season. Ninety-seventh Street Rec will be getting new roof shingles, hopefully this month, as the weather gets better. The grounds crew, we're working on water plant, getting that area ready for the opening of the bathrooms. Put in some new hollies, shrubs around the sitting area, because they were in bad condition. Second Avenue Islands are being thatched, and the beds are being worked on, weeded. The seasonal ground employees are starting to come in. We have three of them right now on staff, and summer seasonal guys start coming in around the 15th of April, for the rest of the crews. Auto Department took off all the snowplow parts on the big trucks, and are working on fleet maintenance right now for all the vehicles, including police department, Public Works, administration, and so on. I know that New England could use our snowplows this coming weekend. We're supposed to get about 24 inches of snow. Beaches and streets, beach access crossovers have been renovated between 90th and 110th, weather permitting. Vegetation was cut back about three feet off the bulkhead and the pathways by the grounds crew. Then the streets and beaches came in and took out all the old fencing, regraded the area, because of the accumulation of sand on the beach side of the walkways. And new fencing is going in, and I believe gravel, clay will be in for resurfacing at the end of the week. So you're probably gonna see a big mound of gravel over at the 95th Street Lot, where they're gonna be transporting it onto the beach. New street signs are being finished up. We got most of them. A couple of the signs weren't printed properly, so we had to send them back and have them restamped. With that, they're replacing all the poles that we can get to. Most of the ones that are in concrete are gonna take a little bit longer, because we have to take out the old poles, core drill, and then reinstall new signs. They're also replacing all the sign poles and the signage that has faded, and all the beach end work, and the street. They're also replacing all the sign poles and the signage that has faded and all the beach end work and the street renovations, including the stop signs and any of the other signs that are bike signs and whatnot that are in the area. Solid waste. I got to pass this out. Solid wastes and recycling is working on a new guide for the residents. They're going to pass them out in the spring and fall. So this is what it's going to look like. It's just tied against what they have to comply with rules.
That's debatable.
So as you can see, it just highlights cardboard, plastics, and metals and what is accepted and what is not accepted. And then on the back is the do's and don'ts and what is not recyclable. And it also asks that they don't put it in plastic bags. So those will be going out in the spring, they're going to print, I believe, next week. And then probably at the end of May, we'll start hanging them on the doors of all the residents. And then we'll give some of them to the chamber as well as the motels so they can put them on their rooms.
Grant, pizza boxes.
Pizza boxes.
Are they allowed to be recycled?
That's a sore subject.
Yeah.
Only if they're not stained. If they're oil stained, then they're regular trash. I'm sorry?
If there's no grease, is that the issue?
Correct.
Okay. So it's sometimes. Pizza doesn't last long in our.
So you don't want, you don't want any trash in any trash bags, no kind of trash in trash bags?
No, recycles. Recyclables don't go in plastic bags.
I worked out for recycled in plastic and white.
Yeah, I understand that part. I thought you were saying the rest of it doesn't go in a bag. Good.
No, the rest of it.
And is that bag going to be recyclable?
I thought I had heard you say once, Grant, that you shouldn't recycle glossy paper. Is that true or not?
Glossy paper, no, it's not recyclable.
It's not?
You're talking about?
Catalog.
Catalog paper. No, it's not.
Magazines.
Yep.
Add it to the list.
The heavy paper is what they don't take. They'll pull that out of, out of the stream.
So like the League of Municipalities magazine? It's not recyclable.
Correct.
It's a very expensive magazine.
It is. Correct. So. That's pretty much all I got for updates for Public Works, but then I have a little bit to let you know about water and sewer.
What do you mean?
The fire hydrant that we talked about is in the, in the pipeline, installed at the base of the bridge by Middle Township. They already granted the work to contractor.
Oh, that's great.
Hopefully.
Can we back up to the recycling for a second?
Oh, sure.
It says magazines are recyclable on the front.
Regular magazines, yeah.
How do you define a regular magazine? Like is People Magazine a regular magazine?
That is, yeah.
That is?
Yeah. That's the light paper.
Okay.
We should put non-glossy behind it then.
About laying in a catalog.
How about, yeah.
I don't get that one.
Yeah, how about those things, those catalogs, Lanzan and Eddie Bauer, you get them, chock full of them.
Glossy catalog type things.
Are they recyclable?
As far as I know, yes.
Yeah, because it's not, it's not heavy paper, it's just.
Correct.
Right.
Ink they're putting on it.
Right.
I still can't get it.
Grant, I think you ought to consider doing.
If it doesn't do this, it's not recyclable. If it's glossy paper and it's stiff and it does, no give to it, it's not recyclable.
Because, it's really hard to do.
Yes.
I think you should, you should consider doing a two-minute presentation on video to put on the website.
Absolutely.
And hold it up in the air.
People are more likely to tune into that and get that meat, that meat from your message and be able to go back to it when they say, "Well, can we put a can of tomato sauce can?"
Right.
"Can we put that in there?" If they can go back to it and look at it, I think it would be a good idea.
I do too.
A cereal box is glossy. I think like what you said in the video, you hold it up, recyclable.
Right.
I think that would be great.
Right.
Two minutes, two minutes.
To cover all this?
Yeah.
You could cover, you should have the items in front of you. And it's like Lucy with the Vitameter Vegemence, you know, and you could just do your own little thing really quickly.
Have Rebecca do it.
Yeah.
A dancing little thing. "I'm recyclable," like.
And I'm not.
And I'm not, right.
Madam Clerk, you read my mind.
Grant, can I ask you a question? Because I don't go on the trash trucks, but I'd love to just to see.
You can.
I will, I will now after this because I don't know how to, I don't know how to do this. But is everybody flattening their cardboard and their cereal boxes and shoe boxes now? When they're picked up by us, is that, all the boxes are flattened?
Not all of them, no. Not all of them.
And is everybody taking their lids off? I mean, this is, this is hard to do.
It is hard to do.
But then where's it going from here?
It's going, it's going to transfer station and then from there, it's going to Woodbine and then through the recycle plant in Woodbine. And separated. Heavy cardboard would go one direction, you know, light cardboard would go in a different direction. You should take a tour of the plant. We get credit for that, too.
I did. Isn't it?
Yeah, I think I just get frustrated.
Or along the lines of what you're saying, like a touch me board.
Something that people could refer to, and I know that this is a lot of information, I realize that.
It is.
But it's very good. But after you're going to put this on my doorknob, then where am I going to put it?
Recycles.
In the recycling.
In the recyclable.
Is it glossy and how heavy is it? I may not be recycling it.
We do.
A magnet.
Yeah.
But everybody's.
We do have magnets.
Steel refrigerators, nothing's on them.
We do have.
Not as comprehensive as this.
We're not.
Right?
Um, it's, yeah, it's pretty basic, yeah. And we get them from the county, the magnets.
We should hand these out downstairs.
It's hard.
I like the commercial item.
I do, I think, make it a class as a quiz. Take the quiz, you pass it, you get a new can.
Flatten cardboard.
We could talk in Public Works.
No, this is hard.
About that.
Am I the only one who thinks this is, do you do this?
Frozen, all right, just one last thing on this. Frozen food boxes and cereal boxes are the same to me. So one is recyclable and one's not.
Correct.
How does one determine?
Your bird's eye box is not recyclable. It's got wax on it.
It's waxy.
Because it's waxy, but cereal boxes aren't?
No.
Okay.
Not the stuff that's in the middle that holds the cereal.
Yeah, that bag, he's.
That is not recyclable.
What is he made up of?
Yes. Including all the crumbs.
This needs to be simplified.
It does.
This is very hard. I don't think anybody in this room can say they're doing this.
Well, I think when you look at some of it, you know you're not throwing your pots and pans in your recyclable. So I think if we maybe cut out like ceramics, I'm not like, you know what I mean?
Trust me, you wouldn't believe some of the things we find in the.
Okay, all right, yeah, you know better than I would, that's true. All right.
How are we doing with recycling again? What's the percentage of recycling that we're doing?
Our percentage is around, I believe the last report we gave you was about fifty, forty-seven percent, somewhere around forty-seven. They want us at above fifty percent.
Close.
What communities do they have that are above fifty percent? And if they are, what are they doing that we're not?
In K-Me County, there's not many. There's not many. There, I can get you that report, I do have it.
I don't need a report.
From 2017.
Who does it?
The best.
And what are they doing to make themselves the best and why can't we emulate?
It's volume. A lot of it's volume.
And a lot of people don't have the summer, people coming in and out that aren't doing it.
Correct. It's, it's interesting because here in the state of New Jersey, depending on which community you go to, their recycling requirements are totally different. Depending on who, who's doing the pickup and where it's being taken. And then you go to Pennsylvania, you go to Maryland, you go to any of the surrounding states. Some of them don't even do recycling.
In this day and age, they don't recycle at all?
Yep. So we're doing hydrant flushing this month as well. We'll be asking to put that up on the website. Rocky will get the dates to the administrator assistant to put up on the website. So if you see your water pressure go down, you get phone calls at Borough Hall or any of your houses and people say, "My water's brown." Tell them to run the water for about 10 minutes. And it will clear. And don't drink it. Also, on another note, the construction that's going on on 95th Street from the bay to First Avenue is not part of Mark's report. And I'm not sure if the administrator got a report from Remington Vernick.
I've not.
But. As you can see, it's not moving as smoothly as the rest of the streets, so.
Yes, the 300.
Not sure when it's going to be.
What's the ETA for that?
I'm not sure of the completion.
We're not, we're.
We have a schedule.
Updated schedule. Part of the problem was the curbing on the 300 block was not constructed per the most recent specs that were sent to them. So it literally had to be ripped out and redone. Hence, they were.
The sidewalks were lower than the curb, so the drainage off the properties would stay on the sidewalks. So they had to pull out a bunch of curbing.
I was total.
Who discovered that, Grant?
I did. Okay?
Did you start rebuilding the handicap crossovers to the beach?
No.
But you're going to do that this year?
It's in the.
It's in the budget, right? So when do you think you're going to, you would start that?
Soon as the engineer has design and CAFF firm, it's in place.
Some of those would go on during the summer or?
Ah, no.
We're going to wait till the fall.
I would not do that during the summer. Can you imagine the complaints you get?
Yeah, I know, I was just wondering and.
I wouldn't want to do that.
Is there any, is there any state legislation pending concerning restroom facilities at handicap access points to the beach?
There, there is, as a matter of fact, the mayor just got something today in reference to that. It's, it's still pending, there's a Senate and Assembly Bill that could require handicap accessibility at every entrance and the possibility of some type of bathroom. Not adopted yet. We've, I've reached out to the League of Municipalities and asked them if they have a sample resolution and a sample letter objecting to the legislation that we can have. And hopefully by the next meeting, we will bring that forward, that we can oppose that.
What drives the number of handicap beach accesses that we have? What's, what dictates that we have however many we have? I don't even know.
I'm not sure what that would be.
I would say that there's probably an ADA provision that requires some, but I think this legislation is looking to make it more pervasive.
Like one every half mile, maybe?
That's possible.
I feel like I've seen that a half mile.
The current standard is within the ADA, but I know it requires at certain points to have it. But my understanding is that this legislation is going to make that a lot more pervasive.
Correct.
On regular intervals at every street end where you have access. It's going to be.
And we have, over the last few years, we've increased, correct, the amount of handicap accessible crossovers.
By one.
By one, yeah.
Ninety-second. Yeah. The idea is to make the ones that we have safer. And then it's going to be up to you on how many, how many beach ends you're going to want to do that to.
Well, it's going to be up to what the legislature.
Well, that's right, that's what the problem, it may not be up to us and that's what we have to look into. We got correspondence from the city of Margate just today saying that the DEP is looking basically to require beach access, which simply not mean a walkway from a road, mean the installation of public restrooms or the building of parking facilities. And then said the DEP would be required to withhold certain permits, including among others, those required before municipalities can undertake beach replenishment projects and condition their issuance on the permit seeking providing at their own cost public beach access. So this is what is on the governor's desk now. So what was, what's happening now is that we are being encouraged to reach out to the league attorney, which we did today, to see, who do we contact? Do we pass a resolution? Do we send a letter? What do we do to say, "Don't take that aspect of planning away from local officials"? So that is in the process. Literally happened today.
Thanks, Grant.
You're welcome.
Hello. I have a number of special event apps for discussion. You should have the information on each of these, and then they would be up for approval next meeting. The first one on the list is the Garden Club Community Yard Sale. That's an annual fundraiser scheduled for Saturday, May 18th. And that location at the 96th Street and First Avenue parking lot. Just requesting that, that there's barricades put up at the driveways to the parking lot on Friday evening, May 17th, to prevent anyone from parking there the day before. And then they're just requesting some additional trash and recycling cans before the event and then removal of them after the event. And that the public restrooms near the beach be unlocked for that event. The second item is the Chamber Commerce Spring Tide Festival and Boat Show. That is Saturday, May 4th it's scheduled for. The Chamber's requesting the closure of the 200 block of 96th Street to traffic. And that will be from 7:00 a.m. Friday, the day before, through noon on Sunday, May 5th. They also would require no parking signs because that whole area has to be free of all cars. And they're requesting some police support for traffic and assistance with the crowd there. They have some food vendors, entertainment on site, along with boats on display in that area. There's a vendor that does require generator, they'll provide it and coordinate with Public Works on the location. They do have a barbecue vendor that will require a fire permit. The Chamber will submit an approved ABC Social Affairs permit prior to the event because beer and wine is available at that event. And where the borough would require that any food vendors, they are dispose of their own waste, especially any oils or food that not go in our trash cans or drains. The third is a annual, this is an annual event, it's just a Stone Harbor Fitness Retreat. It's just the applicant here is Erica Sehar, she does a few of these a year. She's just requesting permission to host a yoga session on the beach at 105th Street Beach. There are no additional equipment or any requests from the borough for that event. The participants bring their own equipment and mats and beach towels. And the final item is a request for a film shoot. They're requesting a number of road closures, the name of the movie is Will Be Boys. It's, it's, the dates coincide with the Spring Tide Festival, May 4th. In my opinion, I think it's just a little bit, it could be a little problematic with, you know, no traffic on 96th Street. And it might be, you know, just problematic with traffic that day and staffing. I, in my opinion, I would probably say no to this one. But just as, as far as just the time of year, it's. of year, I think it's just a little too busy for us. But you have the, I don't know if you have any questions about any of these other events.
Yeah, Jenny and I talked about it, and we were concerned because it'll be that week, not just on Saturday, but also following into Sunday, a lot of traffic and trying to, we already have enough road closures and detours with construction to add, so it just doesn't seem like it's a good time of year to do it.
Yeah.
It would be our recommendation.
Did they ask for any other?
Some road.
Date? That's all they asked for was those two dates?
Two dates. I did mention in an email that, I did mention that, you know, it is the same day as our Spring Tide Festival, and there could be a problem with, you know, between Public Works and the police just trying to accommodate it. He said it's, you know, it's a pretty tight film shoot, and that's really all, you know, they were just planning the 4th and the 5th. I mean, maybe another time in the year might be possible, but I didn't really get any further with him because I said we were going to bring it up today.
Okay. Did everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yes.
So.
Busy time of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, and he just came in with that request at the very last minute last week. We barely got it onto the agenda for this meeting. We really had to rush and just to get it on the agenda. Just a couple other notes. We are planning the dedication ceremony for the new police building, May 17th. I did, a save the date email was sent to former officers and personnel last month, and I'm working on a formal invitation to go out very shortly. And the farmer's market, I've got so far 25 vendors returning, just still waiting for confirmations from about another eight or nine people, so. That's everything.
The, just so everybody knows, the Memorial Day Parade is going to be upon us soon. That's kind of a joint effort of the Legion and the Borough. Quite frankly, it kind of happens on its own with a little bit of push from certain people. We've been doing the same parade for the past 15 years, as far as I know. So we're still planning on the same ceremony up at the Women's Civic Club, same people in the parade. Change some speakers around maybe, and I'll be going to the Legion, their first meetings tomorrow night, 2019, to let them know that, okay, this is what we're going to do, you know, get ready.
And are you going to be our contact person again?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but like I said, it does kind of come together itself, so we'll do the same wreath presentations and whatnot as always. So I might need you for something on that. I don't know what.
Absolutely. I wanted to, that was one of my next projects to get on board with because we should be doing that now.
Will the farmer's market be opening on the Friday of Memorial Day weekend?
Sunday.
The Sunday of, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Sunday, Memorial Day weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, so far, they're returning vendors that I have confirmed. I don't know how many spaces we'll have available for new vendors. I got to wait and see these last, like, eight people, just to see who's coming, who's going to return. But we may have a possibility of one or two new vendors.
Great. Can we do one more quick discussion?
Yep, that finishes up. Jenny?
Yep.
Good job. Mark gave us the new ordinance for the drones, and he did a fine job. One of my points, which I talked to him ahead of time, but I'd like everybody to know that it does, on G, it does say that no person shall use model aircraft or civil unmanned aircraft system for purposes of molesting any wildlife. And my concern is the beach, the point, and the sanctuary.
So Frank Wernchini, who's our municipal prosecutor, arrived at that after going over it point by point with Charles Raely, who's the senior attorney for the UAS. And basically, what we were advised is that some of these things we're looking to do, the federal government is going to include in future legislation with regard to municipal buildings. This is kind of an area of law that's a work in progress, so I wouldn't be surprised if we revisit this ordinance periodically over the next few years as different things evolve, and we can modify it as the federal government starts to set certain standards. But that's kind of where we are right now.
So if someone, I just want everybody to hear it. So if someone goes and flies a drone over the point, we have no recourse?
No, the charge will be, you can charge them relative to that particular spot, but you're limited to what's in that document now. You may get more relief shortly, but there is a provision relative to harassing wildlife, and that would be where you would look to for relief with regard to that.
And this idea of, like I, we got interrupted before, but when you're flying a drone out of sight, I think I had seen some proposed ordinances from other municipalities that made it illegal for you to fly or tried to make it illegal.
So there's a provision relative to recklessness and carelessness that can be imputed when you have no visual line of sight over.
But what I'm getting at is if you have no visual line of sight and someone calls the police department down because they feel they're being harassed, and there's a drone in their backyard, but they have no idea who's flying it or where it's coming from.
Right.
How are they going to enforce that?
Obviously, there's going to be issues with regard to this, and every one has not been resolved. I mean, how are they going to do it? That's going to be an issue. At some point, if you take command of the drone, somebody's going to come for it.
No, Mark, I think.
You do that?
The big net.
All right. So this is the, you're saying this is the best we can hope for at this time?
At this point, this was reviewed with the senior attorney for the FAS, and we went over our ordinance point by point. They indicated certain things weren't acceptable, they provided modified language, and yes, I would say to you that this is the best we're going to do at this point in time.
And since I'm going to introduce this and the no wake ordinance for the first reading in the regular session, so could you just let us know the no wake ordinance you've looked at, been amended?
We haven't amended it. My understanding is that Frank has discussed it with our law enforcement and also has plans to do that relative to the testimony and the manner in which complaints will be prepared, so we're going to leave it as is and proceed.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark Caravan. That was a good job.
You're welcome.
I just want to protect our precious places. Anything else? We've got a couple minutes. Because we've got enough, we don't have enough minutes to go into closed session, but we have enough minutes if there's any other pending item anybody has. And I'm assuming utilities was simply covered under Public Works.
Correct.
Okay. All right. If nobody has any items, we will adjourn, and then we'll have the council meeting in 12 minutes. So motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?